I'd like to call the January 3rd meeting of the Brookline Select Board to order at 6:31. Okay, and we'll go right to review any changes that the agenda may have, okay? All right, see, none. Going to the minutes from -- look at and approve the minutes from the December 20th regular meeting.
I noticed Mr. Webb's name was Ms. Webb, I don't think. There it is.
I didn't even know that.
Down further if you go past Ms. Webb.
Gwen and Bruce.
Okay, on page one.
No, but there's anything wrong with that.
No, no.
Nothing wrong with the pleasure email.
Any other errors on page one?
The only other thing I had under the December 6 regular meeting, I moved to approve the minutes from December 6, 2017, not December 5.
Oh, December 6, very good. Anything else on page one?
So that would mean at the top, December 6 as well.
Oh, yeah. Oh, here as well, December 6.
See that under the actions? Yeah, the first line, actions.
Page two.
In the second paragraph, it says, "The justice of the peace and select board constitute the Board of Abatement," and then the next sentence should be, "An abatement hearing will not be needed until February 2018."
All right, it is the February, good.
Thank you. Very good. Anything else on page two?
Under the canned bottle returns, it should just be Putney Road Redemption. The header says Putney Mountain Road Redemption. I think it actually said that on the agenda, but we should stick that off because that's not the.
Can I tear away and this is perfect?
Would you say that again?
This mountain should be taken out here.
Oh, Putney Road. Move the mountain.
Which you have it in the.
Description, just a good description.
Okay, we'll move on to page three. Anything else on page three, none? Move on to page four.
I just say one thing. It's just, in all business, the first line, Bills is lowercase, Mr. Bills.
On page five?
Duke, what's Duke?
I had a couple of things under.
Duke?
Where?
Let's start.
Rowby, Rowby Five.
No, that's okay.
On page five.
Oh, yeah, and that was actually one of my things, under donated funds for.
Yes.
The second line, where Mr. Jones had discussed this with Doug, I think we should just say with Mr. Wellman.
Oh, Wellman.
Yeah, I figured. Well, because we never said who it was.
W E L L M A N.
Yeah, and then if you can make it that way on the second, the third line where you refer to him as Doug, yeah.
Duke.
Anything else on page five?
The only other thing I had under regular mail, the second item, Senior Solutions or the Secret Blase.
Yeah, that's wrong.
Is the, her last name.
Z.
E L A Z E J?
I think so.
Yes.
Z E J, yes.
Z E J, right?
Yes.
Finally got that one.
We've misspelled it numerous times and not.
What?
You, everybody.
Okay, page six of eight.
Okay.
Page seven of eight.
Did not have anything.
And page eight of eight. You were working on this on Christmas?
Yeah.
Wow.
Well, I wish you had an hour at your house.
Yeah, great. All right, so.
I move that we accept the minutes from the December 20th meeting as amended?
Seconded by Bruce, any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes as corrected from December 20th, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? Okay, minutes accepted as amended. Scheduled members of the public, there are none. Moving on to unscheduled members of the public, there are none. Right along. Saki update from Mr. Guy Tanza, also known as the Birthday Boy, also known as the Town First. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday to you.
Thank you.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday dear Guy.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday to you.
Thank you.
Could you do that to the tune of the farmer in Adele?
The State of the.
Okay, anyway, the first of the year is here, and obviously we've had a lot of year-end things that we had to change around. All the signs are up on our bulletin boards for the fire permits and the dog license fees and so forth, and dog license fees are available as of today, and you have until April 1st before any kind of late fee or penalty kicks in. So hopefully you'll get them done sooner rather than later, and we won't have to chase you around. That'd be great. The office has been, Gwen has been doing the books.
I love the snaffle.
We have some slowing downs because there's some omissions and a lot of craziness that we're trying to get to the bottom of, which we will, but it's just going to take a little longer than we anticipated. Other than that, things are going smoothly in the office. The snow and the cold has slowed us down, but basically everything's running smoothly.
Okay. You know what comes next, don't you? How old are you now?
Seventy-four years young.
Oh.
I'm so old now, I don't even buy green bananas.
Wow.
Any home closings this month?
No, no, we had a couple of deed changes and so forth, but no closings, no homes sold.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Tanza.
You're welcome.
All right, Mr. Mello, which I spelled your name wrong.
He's not here, but not many L L Os here.
Yes, sorry about that. Did you want to bring us up to the.
Yeah, well, you all know that Bruce died. And what I did was, is I wrote quickly a little letter I thought we should consider sending to the customer. It's Brad and Alicia, correct?
Pardon me?
Brad.
Brad is the son.
Brad's the son.
Brad and Alicia, they live right down. And I wrote a little, just small note to them, thought that maybe we might consider all signing it. But why don't you read it out?
Doesn't have to be exactly like that, but I just thought that that might be a nice idea. We all signed it.
Thank you, Brad and Melissa. Good tragedy and grief. It's a tragedy for the entire community. We as a selector wanted to know that we share in your grief, and if there's any way we can help you in the hard road ahead, we want you to know that as a community and as a selector for your town, we're here for you. So if anybody can help, just ask. Sincerely, the Select Board. Very nice.
I think that's very nice.
Okay.
Want to sign this?
I thought that we'd all sign it individually and send it there.
Okay.
Okay, that's my only suggestion at this point. You all, I think, heard that Kendra Brooks has developed January 14, and your book, The Spaghetti Supper, Spaghetti Afternoon, that is, it started four, fifteen?
January 14?
Yeah.
At Newbrook Fire, I didn't hear.
Gary sent an email.
Gary mentioned it in the email.
Oh, I just came back from the trip. I just kept up on all my emails.
You'll see.
I'm getting someone.
And Kendra might need some additional help with other things. So Patty and I are going to call her probably in a moment and see what we individually and anything she might have an ideas, like if we could do it out and start the process going forward of what we were talking about last time, which I think that it would be, I kind of wanted to avoid this approach. I really wanted to see us have kind of like a get together of everybody and formulate a path going forward because there's a lot of money to be raised. It's over $20,000, it's already been raised so far.
There is a made available, yeah, new donation.
So that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you. Is that Spaghetti Afternoon at Newbrook?
No, it's Newbrook Firehouse.
When is that?
14.
The 14th, which is a Saturday afternoon, yes.
So Sunday afternoon.
Sunday afternoon, excuse me.
All right, so there's an email and information.
Yeah, 14th is a Sunday. All right, thank you very much.
Okay, I wish you well.
Tom, I was in Rhodes down here. I spoke to current projects and plans. I spoke to Archie Clark. He has been home sick for a couple of days and doesn't ready to come out in public in preparation for tomorrow's storm. He hasn't been feeling well, but he did, I did meet with him about the paperwork from Putney Mountain.
From the town of Putney.
From the town of Putney. And we plan to, it's right here somewhere. There it is. It is the Shared Town Line Winter Road Maintenance Agreement between the town of Brookline and the town of Putney, which is now on paper. Archie emailed me back and said it isn't the best interest of the town, it's a fair amount and a fair trade for us to sign it. So I will be signing this. I have it down for later on, but I'll be signing this for the town. We'll change the date from December 20th to today, January 30th.
Okay, that has the language now saying that in the event that either of the towns decide that they don't want to continue with that?
They haven't, they haven't, correct. There is a knockdown in it. That's correct.
Is Winter Road the name of the road, or is it a term for a road?
It's what?
It's the winter as in the season of.
Shared Town Line, Winter Road.
So winter maintenance, okay.
Yeah, winter maintenance between the town of Putney and Brookline, which is in exchange for tax.
That's God.
That was that.
Oh, Jesus.
Archie, Archie's not here. I know on January 5th, there was a bid that was advertised for people to take a look at the culvert work, and they, that is, they're going to be meeting at 9:00 a.m. on January 5th to discuss the culvert Stankowitzes. So that's with Bruce, not Bruce, that's with Mark Bills and the, and or Archie. They can see the culvert on Friday at 9:00 a.m., and that's what they're going to be doing.
Yeah, I actually saw them, adjourned by them today, and they, both of them were there, and they stopped. I think they were kind of preparing to.
Prepare what they wanted to show.
Yeah, and maybe trying to make sure it might be visible by them.
Say it again.
That's location where?
It's on Brassup Road by.
Mike Stankowitz's house.
Near the old Stankowitz residence, because Stankowitz has now sold.
I don't know.
Yeah.
We're going to have to name it something else.
You don't want to call them.
The former Stankowitz.
The former Stankowitz, yes.
Everybody knows how to spell Stankowitz.
Exactly.
That's why Archie was to be used.
It's interesting. And I guess we'll just postpone this general contractor discussion again until there's some concrete things that goes on. New business, anybody have any new business to bring up?
No.
No, man.
Wow.
All business, we'll go down to town report. I just like to ask one thing. At this point, the vital statistics, we, the people who were born and died in town, I'll get that information from you.
Right, I had to wait for the end of the year. I'm still trying to get a confirmation in regards to some, you know, vitals that I need to make sure they're absolutely correct. I don't like to speculate, you know, but at any rate, I will have that information and probably send it to you Thursday or Friday.
Okay.
So I have all those reports, all the end of the year, the dog license and all that other stuff, but I had to wait till the 31st of.
Well, guys, now, what I've done the past two years, once Guy sends me the list of that, I do, then I call up the obituaries and put in a little who's passed, and I'm sorry, I also put in who's been born. One of the things that we've talked about before is in the past, in memory of and the dedication of, we're sort of two in the same thing. Then we had some divergence from that, and I think we were talking about doing a dedication to one of our residents. It's considered difficult to get information on her because of HIPAA laws, but Chris passed on an email to us and suggesting that we.
It says to Doc and Jane.
Oh, it says to them, might want to consider doing a dedication to the Cuts family in lieu of their recent loss in addition to the others. So maybe this year, the dedication and in memory of would be sort of a combined one with the owner.
Yeah, yeah. You have the Blues and you have, you know, Blasey, who were very instrumental in the town for many, many years. It's going to be a tough thing to, you know, put them together, but I think they should be.
With sufficient information from obituaries and other newspaper articles, I think that would be.
Yeah, I think I would, what anyone individual, if you're idea putting up your initial.
Yeah, so that's what we'll. That will be much cleaner than job.
Right. You don't have to do investigative.
No.
Doc, what's our timing with, we talked about months ago, about getting the auditors, getting the auditors dump of the books and that we can review them, but we have to get them the numbers first.
Samara's going to be here tonight at 7:30 to help us with some, any of the budgeting things. So we may reevaluate our agendas so that we, since we're early, but let's bring to ask that question with that.
Well, so, right, I mean, so the schedule we've developed for producing the town report is that the plan.
According to Heidi, she's the, she, I saw her Sunday, and she seemed to think that the auditors were pretty much done with what they had to do, but, you know, that's just maybe Samara should touch base on that.
Yeah, so the plan is basically for the next couple of weeks to be finalizing content, any reports that aren't done and details like that. By the 24th of January, hopefully everything is ready for the person who's going to format it, which is me. And then the idea is that I will have it ready by the 31st for an assortment of people to proof, including Julie LaVornia has offered to proofread, as well as all of you guys. So we'll have it, and then that gives us about more than a week to find issues and tweak them before we hand it off to the printer.
So we could.
I think it has to be out to the public on the 16th of February, for some reason. If you look on that Vermont League of Cities and Towns.
Two weeks.
Before town meeting, it may look for February, and it may say when the town report has to be.
Yeah, I think Heidi had looked at that. I mean, we developed this with Heidi.
Okay, okay.
When Chris signed it with Heidi, whatever, a month ago, whenever it was. I'll say that I still need to have a couple of conversations with the printer themselves to just confirm a bunch of things on them. So we might tweak these a little bit, but generally speaking, that's the way it's.
The one I'm really concerned about, and the one that created the snaffle last year, was the warning for the school district.
Yeah.
That's the one we need to really get on because there were three or four renditions of it last year that created a lot of problems.
Because there was another election on the same day.
And we changed the time of start.
We've got to check with you.
I haven't done it because Matt tried to bring, I've not sent an email, but I'll do it this week. Matt and Pat and Carol. So they know what you have. I want to ask them, and I want to ask them to come later if they could.
And the school board, the school meetings, they call for 11:00 a.m., so that's pretty much we suspend at 11:00.
Yeah, we sort of have, right. So that brings up a question that I had, which is, when do we as a board, when are, when are we going to write and decide on our warnings for town meeting?
Well, didn't Samara say at the last meeting that she, I know you worked on, one year I literally typed up what was given to me, and then you typed up the warning page, but Samara was saying that she would do some of it.
Well, I think she will, she will create the budget aspect of it.
Did I give you a draft of the one I had started?
Yeah, you gave me a piece, yeah, you gave me a printout of something that I've done before. But I mean, obviously, that's something that we collectively as a board need to decide on what's going to be in all of those and voted.
And that's what we did the year I did it. We sat around and then I, then I just filled in.
The numbers.
The two, the two or three.
Well, we have time today. We can take a look at just.
Because I had, I had given Dave a draft, because most of the one, the warnings, the beginning are the same.
Yes, they're just, their wording is the same, and you just have to pop in numbers.
So I did pop in.
The only thing is with the select board, we have to get the terms properly correct. There is some issue with the terms.
Well, like Article 1 will let Samara write, Article 2, like town clerk, town treasurer, collector, delinquent taxes, and all other officers required by law. So Article 5 is one that we have to itemize a little bit. Who are the officers required and, okay, so, and then six, the rest of them are the ones we have to add.
This is the way it was exactly, and this one has to be put in each time, too.
This is an old one. This is not even the most current one. This is 2014, I just pulled this.
I mean, I guess I would, I would say, is there any reason that we can't have that be an agenda item that we completely deal with and finalize at the January 17 meeting?
Absolutely. We'll just, we'll, we'll set aside a half minute. If we have time today, we can.
Yeah, I mean, potentially, potentially, I mean, we have a, right. I guess I'm not completely sure that we're going to have all of the information that we would need in order to finalize it now, but, but maybe we can, yeah.
But some, yeah, that's correct. One through five is pretty much we can agree. We can always add that for. Can we suspend all business for a few minutes and go back to the highway and roads?
Yes, I was planning, why not?
Since Mark's here. Mark, your absence, before you got here, he just quit, I said that Archie had emailed me that it was in the town's best interest to sign off on the winter road maintenance with Putney Mountain and the exchange. So that's going to be taken care of. I also spoke to him about the materials due to town from Fitzpatrick Escavating. I just double check with you. I will email and send a note to Fitzpatrick asking them for materials to be delivered, and I'll give them five weeks to get into the yard, but I'm also going to ask him to contact you to confirm it. But what specifically, again, is there a term, I misplaced my notes when I came back. Is it crushed gravel or rock?
This would be the repayment for damage to the roads?
Yes.
Yeah, I would say road gravel.
Just call it road gravel. Is there a size I'm supposed to say?
Inch and a quarter?
Road gravel, one and one fourth inch, and it's, we're looking at, looking at approximately $400 worth of this material to be delivered to the town lot after contacting you. He's going to confirm with you. All right, so.
Yep, yep, that'll work.
And the other thing on our agenda was talking, we're not going to need to talk about the general contractor discussion for the Saul Sand shed, since we don't have that going yet. And I also mentioned that on January 5th, Friday, you're going to have a big review of the material, so I'll let you talk about that.
Okay, on that topic, I met with Archie to do a site visit ourselves to go over what any questions that may arise at the site, and we put together some paperwork that I would like, maybe Guy could copy for me tonight before you leave, just a project description with all the state standards and regulations and description of job quality that we.
I've had a number of questions in regards to is the project bonded, and I, I said I didn't think it was bonded. In other words, you know, I had to put it from the phone and respond. Is that something that you're doing in your RFD?
We didn't have that included in here, but I, that's a good question, and I could give Archie a call right now, and we can find that out if he feels it's necessary. I don't think we've required that in the past.
Right. But I've had a couple of inquiries, and I treaded lightly on it and asked them to speak with Archie, but I thought, based upon our past, that we didn't require a bond on him, but maybe it's something that, you know, going forward, you might want to consider.
Right, now, as far as the work goes itself, the winning bidder is responsible for all the payments right up until job is complete, and then he pays back wherever the concrete structure is manufactured. But I will, I can give Archie a call right now. I know he's home, and I'll find out that question. So basically, we're, we have the meeting set for 9:00 Friday morning, and it's mandatory for each bidder to be there, and so I'll just, I have a bunch of these copies made up to hand out, and hopefully I can answer some questions that arise and.
What if the weather precludes that meeting?
We'll sit here and have hot chocolate.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, the, I could ask Archie this question also. We were trying to think of everything, but these are two questions that we didn't.
I mean, it's not supposed to be snowing on Friday.
Well, there, you know, there is a big storm coming through, and who knows what it's going to be, so.
Supposed to get two to five.
I know it wasn't posted for, it's been in the paper already two weeks, but pretty, pretty.
Just wondering.
Yeah, let me make that full call now. That's basically all I have to report tonight is, you know, the roads are snow covered and freezing, so not a lot to report on.
His notice.
So let me ask Archie these two questions, and I'll come back.
Okay, so we're going to go back down to the old business hall, just making a phone call, is that right?
Yep.
Okay.
Are there any drawings, any engineering drawings or anything? Because somebody asked me for plans, and I said all the information was in the, on the website.
All that I have is description, measurement, and there's no, no reference to go by the company that.
Of course, a town, town report.
So I've got outstanding ones, our listers I haven't heard from. They had let me know in early December that I'd be carrying from them, but I haven't heard anything, so I'm going to follow up with them. Nothing for historical or cemetery report, which didn't happen last year either. Auditors have told me they have to wait for their reports to come through for things at the end of the year. Guy also has to wait for his report until the year ended, and then you with the dedication. So you're the, you and Guy, the two that are definitely confirmed. Auditors I know will be coming, but. Auditors I know will be coming, but listers, I haven't heard anything from, and I haven't heard from Cynthia.
We're going to have to cut off deadline.
Yeah, we passed it three times.
Yeah, that's, it's over. What are we going to do?
Well, there are certain things that were statutorily obligated to.
To do, so everything else is.
And some of, you know.
We just don't want to repeat last year, it turned into a little bit of a mess between the budget numbers and the thing about the school, we don't want, we want to touch our eyes this year.
I'm being directed by the select board that if they want a report to appear, it should be sent to me by one.
Three.
I mean, what do you think?
Well, yeah, I mean, we need to have it by.
Three.
I think we, I know we keep changing it, obviously.
Final report's due by, so that we can work on it.
We have to have it by the 24th.
So I should have them.
Oh, no, we don't allow me to tell.
Well, I know, but the thing is, is that if we said, if we.
Guy's just going to be here a little later because he's waiting on so much information.
I know.
Guy's not a concern.
Guy, yeah, right. We're not a concern.
Have you gotten the principal's report, the superintendent's report?
No, but that wasn't my purview. Who's reaching out now?
Heidi was reaching out to those guys on that.
Oh, okay.
I mean, quite frankly, there are some things that we didn't expect we would get until very late and that we would have to chase people about, which is the school portion of everything. And then there are things that we thought.
Get it done early.
There's no reason it couldn't have been done a month ago, two months ago. So the, and that's the things that, but those are things that are less required. I mean, like you say, the Historical Society, some area, we didn't have anything last year. And there's effectively been no action, so what would the report maybe even send? So, and that's, that's fine. But yeah, the school stuff, I mean, I figured in the next week or so, I'm going to reach out to Heidi and see if she's gotten any kind of positive impact, positive feedback from the schools, from the principal and the superintendent on how things might be progressing.
When is the New Brook, the next New Brook School Board meeting tomorrow?
I think it's Thursday, isn't it?
I was going to say, I can, you know, I can ask Sherri Green to, you know, to ask, because she's our.
Well, at the moment, I don't think we need anybody to follow up separately for that, because that's something Heidi was, Heidi has a relationship with these people, and she was already planning on pushing them to the extent she can push them, and I don't want any of these people to feel like they're being besieged, because some of it, they can't necessarily control themselves.
I just remember Scotty had his principal's report done early.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't. Scott, this is probably.
All right, so if there's anything else that you.
I'll say that we determined, I'd say by the 17th.
Yeah.
That'll give us a week.
It gives us a little bit of time to truly panic if we don't have stuff.
How long does the printer take to print these, and then it has to be mailed out and meet everybody's hands?
Well, I mean, we built this based on what they did last year, and all of it, I need to, I said that I would reach back out to them again and kind of explain to them how it's going to work this year. They're going to be doing less of it, and it's going to be more prepared when it comes to them, but I hadn't done that yet. But I will certainly have spoken to them before we, again, know.
I'll send the 16th circuit report on the 17th.
There you go.
I just thought something might be a good idea if we could have bold or make a substantial statement that would change the start time of the, on the town meeting. So a lot of people, they might not even kind of read the book and think it's going to start at 10:00, and then they show the 10:00, so they're going off their hour.
It's probably something that we should have sent around to the, what do they call it, the listserv?
Yeah, we should probably, we should probably communicate that and.
And do this once we should have been. To put the blast out there.
And did he have somebody who was going to do the luncheon coordinate the food and donating?
Yeah, it was a meeting house, I should have, I can't believe I used that word. Oh, that church. People get used to it.
No, should I write to Julie, and then ask her to send out, reach out to the community, see who would like to benefit from the power, and that'll be the first mention of the 9:00 AM start time today? So, Julia, I'm writing to her, asking for, is this a luncheon break? Luncheon organizer for town meeting day? And also that starts at 9:00 AM.
The proceeds are kept by the organizer, you know, has to benefit organizer.
So they make that special?
I'm going to do that for the listserv who are on. I can even do that front porch, one, two.
Yeah, that's probably good.
Got to do this. Okay, anything else?
So I'll send out an email, I just want to make sure we're all aligned, who's doing, I'll send out an email for the few people who are where, and say that it's due the 16th. Dave, you're going to follow up with Heidi regarding schools, and there's something else.
I'm going to follow up with her.
Right, the doctor meeting, the front porch.
I might do this.
Okay.
They're getting nothing.
Already the work bills to come back. If we're done with the town report, I'm going to just go down quickly to communications, we get, get done with that.
Let's do it all.
Comments considered, all right, this year so far, we've had 36 inches of snow in the month of December in several snowstorms. Have we received any complaints, plowing or anything?
Oh, yeah, 36, oh, yeah.
You got 36?
Sherri Green measures it.
She has to draw.
She measures it, and she has her first.
She can go up to what, I plowed, and I'm telling you, we got 36. We got nine, five, four, and four. Nine, five, four, where's that come to?
I love it.
We've got more than nine.
Two fours and five, and I write down, two fours and five and nine.
Couple that were just two-inch.
All right, well, I'll put this in the wall. The number, I asked someone to record the storms. We do get more snow on this side of the town, let you know.
Whatever, my side of the, the side of the one.
I am.
The one that's got white lines on the road.
In our neighborhood, it's been sunny in 70s.
All right, so no. As far as other mail, I just want to point out a few things when you press this around. We were questioning about the Rescue Inc. bill assessment for the town. The bill assessment is for $15,173.90, and this was a number we had. We weren't sure where it was, but it was found, flipped to the back of other appropriations, so the paperwork is here, is a document for Rescue Inc. What are you looking at?
Is that what you're talking about? I missed it.
During budget stuff.
In budget stuff, we couldn't.
Find Rescue.
We were saying through an email, we had this number, but we didn't have a receipt. This was stuck to some other paperwork that. Samara, yes, okay. Another item here in my communications is a policy that needs to be reviewed. I'll have to put it on the agenda for the next select one meeting. It's a policy for bridge number eight, and what is this?
We did that last spring, and we kept, you know, pushing it off and pushing.
Right, so I have to put it on the agenda. Town approval for excess weight use Brookline roads and bridges. It's a change in policy. Need to review the whole.
What happened is that I believe on one of the bridge reports we did, we had to, there was a renaming of the bridge or something. There was just some things that were wrong, and we have to take a look at that. Archie has, Archie knows all about that and what we were going to, what we were attempting to do. He had to fill out a form for the Department of Transportation, Agency of Transportation.
So we will put on the agenda for the next meeting.
Policy for review.
Policy for review.
Bridge number eight.
For roads, Brookline, weight use for Brookline roads and bridges.
I think they were weight limits.
Right, what he says, weight, excess weight use. So this is all the same thing. Other communication here. Guy gave me a printout of an email from Anna Patterson from Vermont Gov. Regarding the equalized grant list for Wyndham County. That information is not going to be updated in time for initial budgeting. Last year, our equalized municipal property grant list was 700, excuse me, We're hoping that our equalized amount for 2018 will be around the same, so we're going to be using the 2017 numbers until we get a updated form.
Their meeting is scheduled for January 16th, their budget meeting, county budget meeting.
That was the municipal property what?
Equalized grant.
The town pays a county tax, and the tax is predicated on our grant list value, and when they decide what the percentage is, they will use that number, 745,000, whatever it is, which is predicated, if you take it all out, it's 74 million, 300,000, that's what our total valuation of is in town.
The next piece of mail that I have in front of me is the town, city, village certificate of highway mileage. Does this go on the agenda, or is this something?
We do that every year, it's got to be in by February 28th, I believe. You know, which each, 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 each road, we have so many miles, I think it's 16 or 17 miles, and that's what the town is paid for, but it has to be documented with the agency of, Agency of Transportation. We sign it every year, then I also sign off on it, and then we submit it to the Agency of Transportation.
We had a problem where we were just signing off on it without action. Remember, we had a problem with Greer Road before, so is this something that are you going to verify, and we'll put it on the agenda?
Yep, we can also look at last year's copy, because nothing has changed since last year. Basically, all the numbers are the same. The only time we had an issue was when we changed Greer Road and L Drive, which was a few years ago, so everything is pretty much the same.
So that has to be discussed at the next meeting. There's a copy of ELTC news, I get this electronically a lot.
Yeah, right. Also, did you get the, oh, all right, maybe that's the letter.
And then, we talked about this and approved this already last week, last month, but we did get the request from Tinsen, Tinsen preschool for the use of the town for their rabbit run, and I signed off as the select town official that was supervisor. They will provide us with their insurance certificate, and I think that's the all of them.
There was one, one more, an appropriation request with the figure put in, it was the therapeutic boss thing in Wilmington, and it's come to light that apparently Elizabeth Cuts was a, a student there, or.
Yeah, so I said that, but they didn't have a name, they didn't have, it's not here.
Yeah, well, it's now, she sent it in, I forwarded the email to Samara, and I thought to you it was the amount of $500 that they requested.
But we had decided at the last board meeting that we're not, it was too late, and it should have been in earlier.
It's entirely up to you, entirely up to you.
Yeah.
And I think Samara was going to see her about that. But it's not here in the mail, updated request, except I think we've got it electronic.
So that's it?
All right, so that's it for our mail. We're still working on there, we can go do our pay orders with you online. I'll go pass around the payroll warrant, Bruce has already signed for it, he came in last week. And I'll take, take a look at that when it comes back, I'll read it into the minutes. This I already read through the beginning of the meeting before we came in. And the accounts payable warrant, let's come around to everybody. I'm going to read into the minutes payroll warrant number 2018-25 dated I'd like to make a motion to approve that payroll warrant in the amount of May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by, is that David?
Chris.
Chris, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of accepting payroll warrant 2018-25 for $1,934.45, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? The whole warrant has passed.
That's pretty bad. Bring it, bring it. Except for this one, we got his roads and budgets. We just concentrate on that, don't we?
Getting finished.
Can we get all the, do we have all the numbers?
All of them?
We have all.
All that we've decided on.
So she just has to finalize it and give us a bottom line. Do we have that?
She's coming, someone else is coming, seven thirty. So Guy, what time were you born?
I think it was like 3 o'clock in the afternoon.
Me too.
Yep, it was, it was before happy hour.
He was born.
Before happy hour, he comes out with a drink.
Was it, weren't you born, your parents were moving back to New York, and so you ended up being born in Connecticut because they came before they got blood, something like that, I'm not sure.
They were visiting.
Born in Connecticut, that explains.
I was born in Bridgeport, Connecticut, Bridgeport Hospital. And since then, the town was going downhill when we left.
Wishing you many more happy birthdays.
Thank you.
Accounts payable, I'd like to make a motion to approve accounts payable warrant 2018-26 dated January 3rd, 2018, in the amount of $20,037.3. I'm going to make note that there was a July invoice found for, that we're paying in this particular one, number one.
Archie Clark has.
That is included in this amount. Okay, everybody have a second on this?
Second.
Seconded by David. All right, all those in favor of approving accounts payable 2018-26 in the amount of $20,037.3, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Payroll warrant has been approved, $20,037.3.
That would have been an invoice found in July was included, doesn't it?
Correct. All right, ladies and gentlemen, so accounts payable.
An invoice found, an invoice from July.
An invoice from July was found and is being paid in this one. Okay, so setting the agenda for the regular meeting on January 17th. One, we will talk about the term, the articles that need to be put into the book. We will talk about the road mileage paperwork that has to be signed. We're going to review the policy. We're going to review the policy for the weight limits for roads and bridges. Two, three. And budget again, if I, yes, sir, what else would you like to put on that?
I was thinking, if we don't have, hopefully, we should have final, final numbers of where we're at with our budget, and then maybe on that date, we can decide what we want to do with the town employees at that point, to see where we are plus or minus in the budget.
Yeah, hopefully, either later, either we'll know that tonight, or we should be able to.
I say by the absolute, well, she says it, by the absolute time of January 17th, then we should finish that off and be done with it.
Well, we'll have to.
Not your day anyways, that's happening.
We'll have to, because we have to vote on the warning, and we have to call out the specific amount on the warning.
So we have to have it.
Yeah.
So we have something, we talked about that a little bit today, maybe to rethink how we approach this, this thing.
Well, I was going to suggest that we find out where we are, plus or minus, and then decide going forward, what we want to do about raises, offending. Would be approved.
How we work about doing that, most of the way. All right, so that would be number four, employee compensation. Any other items, I'll put it on a draft, and if you wanted to add something to our agenda for the next meeting, you know, we'll get it before that weekend, I can send to Guy that Monday morning or Sunday night.
So basically, by the next meeting, we're really pretty much done for town meeting, because you guys are going to formulate and be ready to print it up, and by the time we get to the first meeting in February, it'll be over session.
Yeah, right, I guess the only thing would be, will be.
To approve the order.
Will be proofing it between the meeting of the 17th and the first meeting in February. But, yes, everything.
Should be done by.
Everything the board.
Needs to get involved.
Needs to get involved in should be done by December.
Then we get to him.
The only other thing to add to that, to the January 17th meeting, is that we will be voting as a select board to approve or not to approve the town plan that's presented to us from that committee.
Right.
All right, so that would be. So, at this point, we can hear our treasurer has arrived.
So we got the two of them.
And we'll be able to finish up. I did photocopy what Samara left in the mailbox, everybody has in front of them, it's fiscal year 2019 budget worksheet, so you want to take a look at that, if you see that the numbers that are plugged in here from the most current numbers that we gave her.
How would you feel about House?
I have. No, it's on the computer in a document.
Yeah. Right. So assuming, yeah, so we now have, from Samara, the final, the final appropriations. Because if that, they had in there was maybe probably last year, sorry, worked off last year.
Or maybe worked off. Earlier list when I had been writing things in.
So one thing we'll need to update on the, on adding to this final list of them, which I think, yeah.
I don't know why she's got, I've got two here. It was in the.
Oh, was it in twice?
I don't know, this is bigger print than this.
Twelve, twenty. Oh, yeah, this is what she sent, this is what she sent us out.
Twelve, twenty, they're both the same, I think.
Oh, and there were two? I don't think I even noticed that.
I think that's what, how the email came.
Yeah. But in any event, I guess if you, as a starting point.
Yeah.
Because looking through it, I mean, the rest of this, like you say, I don't have any of that changes. Because none of it's, none of it's specific, where we have to fill that in once we know it, we have to fill that in once we know it. This we could update, because we know it now. The rest of them, the only question I have, and maybe, and this is probably something we clarify when we go through the budget, is whether.
All right, what do I do with this part?
No, I think you do it the same way, I think you do it kind of similar to how she's, oh, no, I guess we have to actually, I guess we have to actually have a separate article warning. So I think probably what we have to do.
But why are you warning something we already decided we weren't going to do?
No, this is one we are going to do. We did, we did vote to approve to give $100.
Oh, not the $500 request, just a hundred?
This is the one that took the horse, that was.
Yeah, I think they only actually requested a hundred, but.
Guarded animal, they were just therapeutic.
Oh, okay.
I guess historically, the way we have done it is we've warned that separately from all of the other appropriations. So there would be another article specifically just. There's probably, we've probably done it somewhere in one of the last few years, you can probably look at that. So the only other, and sorry, we're kind of getting back into a, just, I guess we're getting a little bit into the discussion of the warning. Do we want to, I mean, we can discuss it when we get to go through the budget, but do we want to just straight budget for the recycling amount? Or do we want to warn it separately like we did last year?
We were talking about asking the community if they wanted to continue everyone's budget versus we don't have to warn, we can just incorporate it into our budget.
I think it should be incorporated into the budget, because everybody we've talked to love it, they want to do it. If you put it as an article, then you're going to have another 45-minute discussion.
I'm totally agree with Gwen.
You understand what I'm saying?
Absolutely. I think if they've got an issue with it, they can bring it up, it's in the numbers. It's already approved.
That's my opinion.
It was approved last year. I think that, my opinion is.
That's easier for us. As long as they cut the budget, we can offer that.
Go on, let them, it's their job to look at the numbers. It's not that hard to take 20 minutes to look at your book and decide if you're unhappy about something, rather than what Gwen was saying, if we.
Well, I thought that was brought up last time, and it was discussed and said, we don't have to, we don't have to warn it again, because they already approved it, and if they want to do it.
Yeah, I think it was more, yeah, we certainly don't have to do it, I think it was more, I'll be honest, a few meetings ago, when we discussed the recycling, I think there was some expression from some people, or at least that's, I interpreted some expression as to whether it might be debatable whether we should even still be doing it. So I just want to be sure that we're comfortable deciding on a number for it and budgeting for it, rather than having a separate discussion at town meeting. I mean, I'm, I think we should go for it and continue to do it and not even warn it separately, but I wasn't sure.
Isn't that one being possibly the same?
Well, here's, here's something, and I don't want to derail us necessarily.
Are you not budgeting now, and does anybody?
Well, we're working into it.
Okay.
I don't want to derail stuff now, but I'm a little bit concerned based on the accounts payable invoices that we've seen the last couple of times. I'm concerned about the costs for the processing of the materials.
The $60, the extra, the clean.
Yeah, I mean, I haven't done a comparison, but it looks to me like it's, the cost of that has gone up.
More of a loss.
Substantially from what it was a few months ago, which you might remember, I've said we were told might happen because of the commodities market and the fact that China is not accepting.
Oh.
Recycling from our country anymore, currently, pretty much. But anyway, I don't, I don't, I think that should be something we discuss at the very end, and/or who discuss it more.
We're going to have one more meeting after this one?
Right.
And I'll tell you why, because you have to vote a number, and that number has to be, like, you have to vote the total amount that you're going to warn, and it has to be recorded in the minutes.
Right.
And then you can publish it.
Right.
You can publish a number you didn't vote on. So, so.
We're going to, we're going to go back now, we're going back to roads and highways, just finish up with Mr. Mills, and then we will work on the budget. We are, we made copies of it.
You did the motions.
Okay, Mark, what do you hear from?
I have a lot of extras.
Okay, contact Neri Chiar to be able to answer the two questions of having to be bonded to bid. The answer to that question is no, we, he said we have not done that in the past, and doesn't feel it's necessary to this bid. However, he said it's something we could consider, if the board feels, we have a big project coming up there with the salt hand shed, he said maybe that's something we could add into our, our BTOX for that. There's a performance bond, or a payment security bond, or, or just, it's something that we could talk about for bigger projects. And as far as, like, if it's bad weather, the way it was written in the paper, mandatory meeting.
Major snow, ice.
Yeah, and if a particular person can't get there, they send a representative to ask questions, that's the whole thing about the, the site visit, is to answer all questions. So anybody that's there, if there's questions that I can't answer at the meeting, we're going to do a site-in sheet with contact, email, company name, and if we have to do an amendment to answer one question, it'll, it'll maybe Guy could answer that question and get it back to everybody that does show up. So we don't have the rain date planned, and.
No date.
Just we're planning to go Friday. So that answers those two questions. And I believe that's, that's all I have.
Okay, I signed a paperwork for the car longer term.
Oh, sure.
How's that going, is that going to go?
I'm waiting to hear back from him, I haven't heard nothing, and I wondered if he had received anything, I know that he has a schedule, and he said he would contact me back when I spoke with him, when he was getting here already to do the work, so I don't know if the snow is helping that a little bit, but I'm expecting a full college in time for the start.
Anything else, did I do?
No, it's just been busy.
And cold.
And cold, and the weather changed, and so everything is, is changing.
I know, winter hit us really fast, hard and fast this year.
I, I was, I was wondering, I guess we didn't hear anything, and it's a different topic, but I was hoping that everybody's waters rose up here.
No? No, and I'm going to email the district and ask them to monitor the heat, open up cabinet doors.
Good idea.
Be aware of this cold snap through the weekend, maybe somebody can check the building, especially if there's a power outage.
Right.
So, and I don't know if I can tell you if there's a power outage, we're all on the same boat, so I have it on my list, and I'll write it again.
Yeah, we've been lucky so far. We had a really serious day after day, cold, cold, and cold, and now we're really going to get it. I had 12 below two days ago. I was supposed to get 16.
Seventeen.
We had 17 below too.
You got 17?
This weekend, they're saying 25, 30.
Really?
Wind chill factor, it could be.
That's the problem, the wind.
Sounds like.
What's that?
Sounds like normal Chicago winter weather.
Oh, you don't get that.
All right, well, we'll move on. Samara, just to let you know, we went through the whole agenda right now, so we are ready to review this, okay, budget, and then adjourn.
Cool.
Snap it off.
I think a copy of. So I'll be very, I mean, I highlighted, I highlighted on the copy box, the amounts that, anything that is either X out or gray.
I have a two-sided copy.
Yeah, the two-sided copy, or the big open items are the whole, all the salaries, the town office salaries. And payroll taxes are carefully based on, you know, the, the employer tax, depending on salaries, unless you're adding healthcare benefits all of a sudden. Just, just, just a suggestion, joking. And then there are two other things, there are a few other things I put in and highlighted that we can, the landfill fees, I put a note in, we have amounts in some of it.
All right, you're going back forth, where are you, what page?
I'm just flipping through pages, so one, two, just, let's just do one page at a time. Okay, the, well, the big, I thought I'd sort of outlined what's highlighted, and then you can go back, and, and starting wherever you want to start. But everything that is white is, you know, without any grayed-out cell, is a pretty definite number. Everything that is gray, there's a big gap, the only blanks are town operating wages, stipends and salaries. And then a few things on the last page of Fund One are, that were highlighted but have numbers filled in, are the, the landfill fees, which we were talking about, even though the definite number, but I think it's.
It's not going to change, it's going to get tomorrow, I'm sure.
The recycling, we'll look at that later.
I think we have it, I think we should look at that a little closer.
We'll look at that at the final meeting.
Where are the salaries, are they in that, was that in that report?
Yeah, previous page.
Page three?
Oh, blank.
The county tax.
We just got an email, we won't know that.
Till the 16th.
Won't know that till the 16th, so we can leave that as it is, and unless it's, there's a really awful swing, number expected 16.
We're going to talk about the audit reserve.
The audit reserve is blank because it has to be warned separately from the revenue. And one thing I thought of that we could do, this was the one thing I thought of, you know, we finished the prior fiscal year with a small surplus.
A thousand some odd dollars.
Yeah, what if we, what if we put in an article, this was, I thought, oh, what if we put in an article and ask that of that $5,000 that we want to keep on reserve, that 2,000 of it be designated to the audit reserve, rather than. You know, offsetting next year's revenue, see what I'm saying?
So, I was also thinking that we might want to have a line item, maybe some of that extra money that was not spent could go for the Brookline Meeting House as a reserve, not necessarily a reserve, but you know, maybe some expenses coming up at the fund raising.
We could designate that toward the Meeting House building, you'd have to warn that separately, because it's from the general fund.
You don't think they're not going to need anything for PDA or something?
Why? I don't, well, my point, you better, you better answer this question than I am, as to what the bottom line is in their budget at this point.
They don't have a budget. That's what I'm saying, do you want to put a budget?
You know, I mean, how much, wait, do they have any money?
Yeah, they have.
Yeah, they have money.
That's all. That's all.
They have.
Yes, these are all.
They have money. They don't have as much as they had two years ago, but they have money. And I, I think we figured it out last time. They're gonna end up with, I hate doing this, but they have about 12,000 they're owed, they're owed another... They have about 9,000 maybe left after they did all their expenses, if memory serves.
Okay.
They are owed a close to another 5,000 from the, from the loan fund. So nine plus five, that's, they'll call it 14. Then they're gonna get 7,000, $7,500 from a grant. So how much is that?
Twenty-one something.
There, okay.
So they don't need any money?
Well, depending on what your aspirations are for the building. If you wanna go for a, you know, a bigger grant and you need more matching funds. But the question is, is, I mean, it's not my decision, but I, I am strongly in favor of not giving back the full amount of the surplus. Because it's a time, a lot of it is a timing issue. And so we could warn that part of the surplus goes into a reserve fund to be designated later. We could warn, you know, you could, but you have to vote a reserve fund to have it being truly reserved. You have to.
Yeah. Is surplus gonna be used potentially for abatement?
You gotta put it there.
Oh, yeah.
You gotta put it there.
Yeah, you're right, and we're gonna have a potential abatement.
Samara, you can, so basically, when you have a surplus?
It's not a big surplus.
Well, I know that, but I'm just trying, I'm just trying to understand the legality of it. You can hold on to a surplus. You don't have to earmark it someplace, correct?
It depends.
No, you have to reach, you have to ask the people, you wanna return to the people because it's the people's money.
Every year?
It depends. Not in the highway fund. The highway fund, if there's a surplus, automatically it rolls over. That's statutory.
Uh-huh, okay.
The operating fund is technically, we've always returned it to the taxpayers. And how do we return it? We don't cut them a check. We simply say, "Oh, we need to raise 200,000 this year. We're gonna take $5,000 off because we have surplus." Okay? So that's fine unless you ask the town, it's, you ask the town payer, you can say, "Instead of doing that, shall the town vote to put the fiscal year surplus of X," whatever the X is. Be held for...
What?
Defining it. It's defined, you know, capital improvements or ask required or, you know, held in reserve.
I mean...
So I think we should work out the wording right now, right? Well, do you wanna do all your, you have to come up with all your warnings. I think the biggest tackling thing on the plate is not decide what to do about, let's get the, the salaries fixed. Yeah, even, he's opposed to calling it. And today's night you make the decision.
All I'm saying is, I'd like to know and know the budget before we start different giving raises or whatever. If we have a number, two numbers that says...
Well, and I think we have all that information.
We have, it's in here.
Can we just, can we, can I suggest we just finish going through the highlighted things just to make sure we're all on the same page about those?
Sure.
So the audit reserve is outstanding as to, well, in any event, it's not a budgeted number.
It's not gonna be a budgeted number.
The debate is whether or not we're doing it. We're gonna learn something separately about it.
And number.
The accounting tax you discussed already, going back one page to page four.
Yeah.
Rescue services. We have since found the backup to that, so that's all.
And it was...
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that number was good.
That's okay.
Fifteen one.
Actually, it's run down a dollar. It's really was 173.90, but really should be one dollar difference, but do you care?
No. On page four.
Page four.
Page four. We're looking at the sort of gray highlighted things just to make, because those were ones where there's maybe a little bit of open discussion.
I'm gonna add a dollar because you rounded up. So it's gonna be 15,174.
Okay.
That was fine.
I'm cool with that.
It's not a difference.
So it went up $440.
And then on highway, at the moment, everything is set. There were no outstanding issues on that.
We haven't decided to make any changes.
Right.
There were no outstanding issues.
So... Samara, correct me. Well, I went through and did some figuring out of where we were over and under on everything apart from salaries, from operating expenses, extended operating salaries.
From last year.
From, no, for this year.
For this year.
Right, exactly, sorry. This year as opposed to last year. And we end up, if my math is correct, let's call it about $4,200 under...
What we were.
What we were last year.
I...
That's just on the general fund, not on highway, because you've already figured highway's about 50.
Right. I have, I have a different version that is set up in the town report format where I've plugged in, pretended all the salaries were the same to try and see what we're at. And I seem to recall, I don't recall, I don't recall anything in terms of current taxes we're at because measuring doesn't work that way these days. But I seem to recall that we're under and compared to last year's budget, when we had two big special articles, we're way under. Without those two bigs, we had the refund deduction.
Yeah, we had the...
So if you compare it to the budget that we're currently in, or current year, we're dropping down by over $20,000 in taxes. Let me go print it. Rather than guess, let me go print.
I mean, obviously, we dropped, you know, just the, you know, we went down $4,000 on just the planning commission's budget.
Well, the planning commission's budget, uh, did you move some numbers around? They went less. They went down to...
Yeah, I mean, things, I mean, I've gone through item by item, I mean, unless there are mistakes in this. I mean, it's basically, you go through page one, basically, it's, it's a net, it's a net decrease in revenue of 160. Ultimately, we end up with a net decrease in revenue of about $235. So that's $235 less that we project we will get.
Right.
So that's a, that's a negative for us. But then, when you look at page three, the salaries, I'm just skipping altogether because we haven't decided anything on this. But basically, page four of the general fund is a net $5,020, I believe, decrease in expenses, which is basically the, the planning commission number. And then, you know, we went down in electric, legal went down 1,500.
Given all factors.
A few things have gone up, but, but, you know, net, it's...
Given all things are the same with the salaries at this point.
Well, this isn't, I'm not even taking into account salaries. I'm just saying everything apart from salaries.
Okay. I get where you're going.
And then on the fifth page, we're basically, that nets out to about a $780 increase over last year.
On which page are you on?
On page five, the last page of the...
That starts the fire.
Fund one. Start with fire department services. Right? So if you go and you look at all the increases and decreases, if you add them all up, then net out to be $781 in increase. So, on that, from that page.
What was the other one? What we could put in on the... It's hardly compare apples to apples. Sorry. But they're being what it is. I came up with...
So we're really, so I guess we'll probably...
If I plug, I plugged in on this one, this is what I did just to see where we were at in my own head. Um, I plugged in the, and I made two copies so we can share if you might have passed my words. But I plugged in, I came up with the taxes we may have to raise would be more than the fiscal 2017 year budget. Fiscal year 2017 adopted budget, but much less than the fiscal 20, fiscal year 2018 adopted budget. So, and that was because... Here. Just here. I'll just give it to you later and we can circle it. But I, see what I did? So I plugged, I, I plugged it up because, you know, because I assumed all, assuming all salaries and wages and everything stayed the same.
Uh-huh.
I, I start, I have a separate version going for the auditors that's formatted to the town report standard.
Is that just one copy?
Yeah, I only have one other copy. I didn't make the copies.
She got a point.
But let me make a couple copies. Well, I...
It's about the same.
Okay. I can't see it without, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I had...
But it's, it's high...
Two forty.
I mean...
That was the one dollar difference.
Yeah.
So you had the same number for the...
Yeah.
I had the same, I had the same number for...
Yeah.
Expense.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to say.
Before the...
Yeah.
Right. Right. And that was before.
But...
Yeah, because we moved one thing in the highway to another thing in the highway, so that was a lot.
We're no longer budgeting to make the taxes. So that's gonna push revenues down, which is the right direction to go. So it's like the revenues went down, but also the expenses are lowered. We're budgeting less expenses.
Right. Can I ask a question, which is, why is the, maybe I'm just not understanding.
Okay.
Why, what's the difference between the total number? What's that difference?
Um, this, the difference is, this is, this is the amount that has to be raised by taxes. So the difference is 157 minus 140 is the amount that's raised by other sources of revenue.
Okay.
That's what the difference is.
Okay, okay, cool, okay.
And this, this doesn't show in the report. This is just for the work sheet.
Right.
It's a way to calculate, calculate it.
Yeah.
Yeah, revenue. So I came out with, assuming no page changes.
Right.
That's what I figured has to be raised by taxes.
164?
No.
No. No, that's just revenue. That's just revenues.
No, just, if you're looking at the new one, look at the top line of page one. It's 140,517.
Correct.
Which is basically...
24,000 or something.
It's 24,000 less than what we budgeted last year, which makes sense because we don't have a $40,000 deficit. Definitely deficit.
And eleven.
And we don't have those special article one, we can see this first one, but we have... And we cut some, we cut expenses. We cut about $4,200 in expenses. But what we also did from the year that was completed June 30th, 2017, is we, in neither year, we, we aren't budgeting, we're getting a lot more conservative in our revenue, which makes sense. We learned that one. Okay, we can't, we can't count money twice in effect. Does that make sense? Uh-huh. So this is hardly, this was just, I have to, I'm doing the worksheet and what's going into the town report is separate because otherwise I mess with the worksheet a lot more than I mess with the one that goes into the town report. And it makes for less errors on one side. That's why I do it there. So then what we do is we put it into the next piece you'll see, in which I have started doing, is I print out a graph before you decide on your final number. There's a tax estimate worksheet, which is... Is this your whole thing?
It is.
Okay. Okay, I just grabbed it. But you know that budget that tax estimated tax worksheet that's in the town report? Somewhere. I don't know where. But that essentially, this one. Page 26. Yeah, page 26 in the town report. Right. These, this column, that first column gets updated for all the numbers. And then you can, you'll actually see for $100 what these, what our current budget does to the actual percentage of tax increase or decrease that we're projecting. Does that make sense to you? So what I do, see these numbers? These totals correspond directly to this report, okay? So they each get plugged in on their line and they're, the percentage is calculated. And down to here is, you know, we have some control over, well, actually, we only have control of that because the veterans exemption is predicated on what the school tax rate is. Okay? But, um, then we'll, then, once you get this with this final updated worksheet, you can like go, "Okay, maybe we should look at this. Maybe we should look at that." And then we can do a final thing and I can actually just go do it on the computer and plug in the other numbers. Or I can send it out to you in advance and people can say, "What about if you try this versus that?" Things like that. But then, you know, I don't know how detailed you wanna get with it, so... But I guess what I'm saying is your very last shot is the meeting where we say, "Okay, this is the amount for our warning," which would be...
The next meeting.
Which is the next meeting.
January 24th. Uh, seventeen, January 17th. And by then, but up to that point, the worksheet would do, I don't know, we put... I just saw the abatement line here. You actually have a line for abatements. We do have a line for abatements, but will the abatement be in the current fiscal year or the next fiscal year? It's probably, if we do an abatement...
It'll be for this year of 2017.
It would come into this year, so it would be something you would budget for.
And that number, I have a little problem with that number because in my investigation, there's a, there's a mobile home money that's rented and so forth, so there's different things that a part of that property belts, so I need to... My language right in there.
But I think it's appropriate to set aside something in reserve.
Oh, yeah, I would think probably $2,000.
Added surplus?
Added surplus?
I mean, we have a very small surplus from the end of fiscal year 2017, 50, $5,700. I shouldn't, why do I not show it? I do show it usually. I don't have it in this one, sorry. One?
Well, that's probably something that we need to decide.
I'll put it in the final one. It's not on this worksheet. Sorry, I think I cut off my page before I showed that piece.
Well, but to your point, if we're gonna do something with it, we need to warn it. So we need to...
Warn it.
We need to be, right.
No, you need to warn what the surplus.
Right, exactly. I'm saying, if we're gonna do something, whether it's related to the abatement or not, whether it's...
Yeah, we're gonna come up with, how much, how much of the surplus do we wanna warn to be set in reserve?
Right.
Right. Can't we find ways to set in reserve all of the surplus since it's over $5,700 and some odd dollars? Whether we say we put some of it reserve for, could you say we could put a warning into, to, for future...
On every...
You can, yeah, you can, you can warn it for a reserve for future...
You can use it to reduce the, the budget of this year. You can do a lot of things, but you just have to ask the people.
Right. Yeah. We're not looking to return it, though. If we can use it to set aside...
We're not looking to return it though. If we can use it to set aside for the abatement, possible abatements.
Possible abatements or other.
Audit and reserve.
Audit and other.
Does that all be voted in the same morning?
I think so. I think that's a question for an attorney, but I think, yeah, you can say the, you know, shell the town, set aside the surplus as a reserve, surplus in the amount of X as a reserve for.
Possible.
Whatever. I don't know what the wording is. But yes, yes, you can warn it, however you want to word it.
So we're looking at, looking at the surplus for one, for abatement, tax abatement. Two for.
Audit.
Audit, reserve. And three for future.
Future contingencies, like legal, future liabilities or building, building, you know, there's all kinds.
Maybe for building because we have.
Well, the abatement, you can.
We have the house, we have the.
The abatement, you can just have, have that as a line item. That doesn't have to be voted by the people. You can have an abatement as an expense.
We could budget.
You can budget $2,000 for, that will change obviously to 142, 142.
Right, we could put in a dollar amount for abatements.
That to me makes more sense.
Well, I'm trying to keep it simple.
Except that the abatement isn't, isn't coming in, I mean, you're paying for something two years out that you couldn't do this year, which we.
Well, I guess may, correct me if I'm wrong, God, but I mean, even, even setting the cuts abatement aside, I think you've expressed.
Right.
Given that we're probably not far away from the town line of reappraisal. We're.
If we should have a.
We should maybe start to establish.
An abatement from.
Some money for potential abatements down the road.
To me, it would, to me, it makes sense to say, let's put 2,000 toward the audits report, let's put $2,000 for abatement and then take the full amount that you have left over from this year and say, what does the town wish to do it? Do you want to reduce the budget by this or what do they want to do it? Give it to another organization rather than piecemeal it all? To me, that makes, it just seems a lot simpler to do it that way.
I think that's kind of what we're talking about.
Yeah, that's exactly what we're talking about. Use it for, put some money away for abatement.
But I think audits are in items. Rather than having to warn it as abatements and.
Right, so you have, you have the audit as a, let's just say for giggles, you have the audit for $2,000, the line item for abatement, $2,000. That brings the amount that we have to raise for taxes to 144,000 or whatever it is.
We were just, no, you can't put the audit reserve in as a, in there, you can't, because it has to be warned separately.
Why is that?
Because we're not going to do an audit next year and then we just have to return it.
And you're setting up a reserve.
We're talking about setting up a reserve because you're not going to get an audit for $2,000.
When we did the 2,000, where the.
We warned it separately.
And then that's a dedicated fund?
It's set aside, yeah, it's a separate reserve in the town operating.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it is better to put it in as a.
The question is, see, yeah, so here's what happens. If you put it in the line item and you end up with a surplus attached to it, you're stuck in the same boat, you know, like, we don't know if we're going to, we're not going to do an audit for $2,000 in one year.
No.
I'll tell you that right now. But, you know, let's say every four years we want to do an audit, let's say we could get it for $8,000 if you set aside $2,000 for four years, you have $8,000 in reserve to pay for an audit rather than saying, shall we vote $8,000 in one year because we're going to do an audit this year?
Right.
Or similarly for abatements, we could do the same thing. Because this year, we're pretty sure we're going to have somebody's abatement. And then we don't know down the line what's going to happen with any reappraisal issues that come up.
But the, the abatement, which would be a dedicated fund again, each year that we put whatever it is, 2,000, 1,000, whatever it is, until, you know, we have some sort of reserve fund so that when the time comes that we need to go to that fund, it's not a total shock to the community saying, wow, we got to raise $10,000. No, we already have 7,000 in there, so we have to raise 3,000.
Exactly.
You know, I'm just trying to make the, to make the pain a little, a little, a little easier to deal with.
No, there's, I think, good, it's, and then, that's, and then the only thing is like if for some reason we, 10 years down the road, we have this money sitting in a fund that we aren't going to use, then you put it to the voters, just like we did with the town shed. Just change it from a floor to a shed, you know?
Right.
Or whatever, you know, but then you just vote to, you know, the vote, you can put it to the town to vote to use it for something else if you don't use it for that.
So, so you're, so what we decided on is the line item for abatements and then a warning for the surplus?
It's, that's not what we did. We were just.
I'm discussing.
Yeah.
I'd like just to say, if we have the surplus, I'd like to apply the surplus to the current needs, but I don't know.
Well, that to me makes the most sense because it gives the people the opportunity to say, wow, you know, we're reducing our budget because we have a little excess surplus. To me, that gives them the opportunity to say yes or no. And that's, and it's going to be up to them.
That's not what I said though.
No, I think you're saying, well, sorry, I don't understand what you're saying.
What I'm saying is we have $5,000 of X, money that, in surplus.
Surplus.
Instead of returning it to the, returning it to the voters, I would ask the voters if we can take 2,000 of it, apply it to the abatement, 2,000 apply it to the audit and then 1,000 apply it to.
Then you're going to have to have three warnings.
Well, no, pre-audits.
Pre-audits.
Whatever, yeah, you can do that. And then you can say, yeah or no.
There are sentences, that's just, each one's a sentence.
They can say, yeah or no. And then if they don't.
If they're not, then it, if they vote against it, then it reduces, then it will reduce the overall taxes.
It will offset the next budget for fiscal year 19, the same as we always do. Now, the interesting thing, oh, never mind, I don't want to get into the interesting thing. I'm too tired. It doesn't matter. So now you can circle back to what to do about salaries.
I have a question about sal, I wanted the board to consider. Do we look, are we looking to offer additional hours for working or looking at one person or just looking at, there's a couple of different things that I would like to look at more. I'd like to look at the change of, of road foreman to road supervisor. There's the BLTC, when I took a webinar, that if the road foreman supervises other people and our road foreman does supervise other workers, it's considered a supervisor that might, if you looked at the compensation, that might look to be a smaller, another raise. And/or I was also looking at the, the needs that we have relied on for help with Sunny Lane Daycare, that that position, the hours that are put into work on that particular building, that that might be, and since it's paid from the rent, that that might be where we can also increase a compensation.
That would affect the budget.
That would not affect the budget. So I was looking at a figure of $25 an hour for work done at Sunny Lane Daycare for that. And looking, I'd like the board to consider looking at the road supervisor title and anything for that.
That would impact bunch two, that's the highway one.
Okay.
That also does impact the front one.
And I was looking at, I, I know you had brought up one particular case, but I don't know if we might look at everybody in fairness, if there was a need for some additional compensation of time that people were putting in.
Well, I, I feel, I can speak to, since, since I have heard my big remarks about that, I'll, I'll just say, you know, I would, if, if I look at, I think the hours we have for the treasury work are pretty sufficient. Occasionally, you know, God has to put in more hours during busy season, and so far we've stayed on budget or pretty close to.
And I know the town clerk has had to work a lot and we had legal issues and put in time and we understand that.
Yeah.
So you're going to.
That doesn't, that doesn't affect, all I'm speaking to is the treasurer and tax control position. And so as far as my hours go, I think I'm fine. And in fact, I, I'm going to tend to be under budget because I have a very reliable assistant treasurer to pick up the slack and do, you know, I mean, Louise virtually does all the bookkeeping except for occasionally I review things or we go over things, you know, we, we do, I do work more supervision and I do, I do do financial reports, but I would love to pick a 50 cent raise and I worked out, in a current hours, it's an increase of $225 in here.
Right.
So I'm not talking a lot of money. And that would be the only increase that I would ask for and I even be willing to take $100 out of my salary because I'm not probably going to do, because some of you may or may not know, I am doing some outside consulting now, so I'm not going to be increasing my hours here.
Well, and from the point of view from the town clerk and assistant town clerk and delinquent tax clerk, well, yes, I do a lot of hours, but that's fine. I, I don't have any problem with that. I, I think my hours are good. The only hours I think in salaries that I see are the one that Samara touched on and the one with Mark. Those are the only two salary adjustments I feel that I can see any changes necessary. Because the town, for a small town, yes, granted, we do not get any hospitalization, we have no benefits, we have no payday days off, we have none of that, but it's a small town. Until that changes, you know, let's keep it the way it is because right now we all pay taxes. So we're getting through, we're, we're muddling through the, the things. The town is in good shape, I think. It's in as good a shape it's has ever been and I don't see changing anything at this point on my end. The delinquencies, sometimes I have to work more than others, but I think the town is doing very well. I don't see any changes in my, on my end.
Part of all the people that are putting in all the effort.
Yeah, but that, you know, part of it is, you know, that's part of the, the thing.
Making it work.
And the next people, obviously, we're not going to be here forever. The next people, whoever steps in behind us will have to have, they'll have to plead their case for the select board and say, look, this is what I need. But by the same token, I want it to be attractive enough that when, when we decide that we, you know, that we don't wish to run anymore, that someone says it is worthwhile for them to go in there. Because to go in at $10 an hour, you know, it's just not going to happen.
No, I think we're at a minimum of $1,250 an hour everybody's getting.
Yeah.
I think that was decided a couple of years back.
The one. The wage is $1,500.
The one additional thing that we talked about last time that I would like us to consider is, and it, whether it's a stipend or a budgeted amount, I don't know, we don't have either currently, though I know we do have a theoretical hourly rate that the animal control officer can put in for, but we have nothing budgeted for that.
No, no.
If it actually happened, I don't know what we would do about it.
Well.
I think we should, I, I think we should consider either putting in, either dedicating a stipend to it or budgeting some amount of money for that reimbursement for the animal control officer. Yeah.
Doc, this is your preview.
I, I agree. I think if we, if we had a dedicated amount that could be drawn on if need be for hours and gas.
Yeah, so put it in the budget.
Put it in.
Rather than give us.
So that was a good point. ACO and I also wanted to bring up, no, no.
Do you want to put it in, if you want to put it in as like my, for mileage, then you'd increase your mileage budget.
Well, no, I think, I think because it's a volunteer and every year is different, when we first started on the select board, we got so much for the year of service. I think that's what she should get because knowing her, she's not going to put in.
Yep.
And yet, so you know, you spend a lot of time that you don't put in for when, when she's not available and you're the backup, she should get, I, I'm just saying, $500 a year for her doing everything.
There's nothing, for workman's comp.
Well, she is.
Even if you.
I'm just making up for it.
Just so you know, for workman's comp, the, in which she has to be covered by workman's comp, the minimum you can put in is $300. That's the minimum.
Right.
So, you know, so you do have to put in a monetary number of, you know, what workman's comp.
But it's just like, like when Doc goes out, when she's not available, she do, she never charges the three hours, but it.
No, I don't put in hours, mileage, I have.
But what I'm saying is we, we, do you understand what I'm saying?
I do.
Is because I know she's not going to put in, if she goes out for one hour, she's not going to put in.
Right.
Today I went out for an hour.
I'm not asking her for it, aren't you?
Right.
Right.
But if she knows that she's at least is appreciated.
Right, and it really is, it really is a, probably effectively a token, but it is.
We should buy it more.
Nice to have it there, I didn't even.
Yeah, and it's an acknowledgement that it is work and there, there are things that get done.
I would feel guilty if I called her and he doesn't bother to borrow the, I have a hard chance to charge that. So do I need this?
I'm having a hard time getting her, recall what you call it coming to.
Looking at putting a stipend for the animal control officer's position for approximately anywhere between $300 and $500 for the year, additional fees of like extended, extended circumstances in mileage would be in addition to the $500.
And she gets now by the hour. She gets nothing.
She hasn't put, she has nothing. She can't, we have in the books $13 an hour for the animal control officer if she puts in for hours.
But she doesn't.
She hasn't.
But we have no budget. We've, we've budgeted, we never budgeted anybody for it. We budgeted for calls of impounding animals, but we've never budgeted for salaries.
And the stipend can be given to her yearly like we do with the select board or?
Yes.
Yeah.
I think that's a.
So do we make a motion, make a motion that we apply.
Just add it in your budget.
Add $500 to the budget for the animal control officer position.
We're very limited.
We are.
Issues like raising in the past and she's put those issues to, and put up with a lot of garbage. A lot more than you know that.
2018, 2019 animal control office position for a sign of jobs, like, and add that to the budget. The other thing I wanted to bring up for the budget is that we pay our clerk $60 an hour to come and clerk, $60.
She's always.
$60 meeting.
Don't get, oh, we're going to be fast, we're so excited.
I just pay $60 an hour, but we, you got it, we just.
Oh, you're talking about D.
Yeah. So, but we're also looking at, it's an important position. I'm glad we have Peter here and he does do quite a bit of driving, so I was wondering if, I know if Peter's not here and one of us do, we can get the $60 stipend, but I would like to add a $15 travel stipend to the weekly, to the bimonthly meeting so that he would be getting, it would be 60 and 15, so it'd be total $75 for the minutes.
From the tax.
And if Peter doesn't show up, then he will pay the other guy.
If Peter doesn't show up, the person who does it in house would be, just get, wouldn't get the transportation stipend.
He just want to opt it to $75 a meeting.
No.
Not as.
No.
$60 plus a $15 travel per diem essentially.
Correct.
Per stipend.
Yes.
So the taxability of that. We'd have to, you would just have to, you would have to, oh.
You'd have to put, you'd have to put in $75 for the meeting.
He'd have to put in $75 for the meeting and pick it up as taxable income unless he provides some sort of a mileage log that would be equal to or greater than the $15.
Might be good, I think.
So that adds up to Peter, just from the tax point of view.
Don't even smile.
The substantiation, well, I mean, there's a way to do mileage so that it's a fringe of.
It's going to change.
Right, it is going to change.
It is going to change.
Because it's.
It's going to change, okay.
But the bottom line is that you have to have so many dollars before you can even start taking some of those deductions, you know, in the, in the world of taxes. So I don't, I just think you should just say that $75 and then that's it, pay him at $75 and whatever he wants to write off in his old world, he can do that himself.
I would, I would remark that there's no telling what will happen. Last year, I made so much money that they slapped me with a $5,000 tax. Because my wife turned 65 and qualified for Medicare and it changed our income by $2,000.
Oh, yeah.
And suddenly slam of all of the people.
Qualify for social security. Yeah, yeah, well.
We're basically. We're basically propping up the Trump administration.
Well, it's, it's all changing, it's all, I mean, I, I followed the legislation up to a point, but there's, you know, there's no, there's been no regulations issued, there's a lot of changes happening, so the tax effect of changing it.
Well, what I was just trying to separate was that the clerk missed $60 for the meeting and I was looking at a travel allowance, $15 is less than the 54 cents a mile that Peter could get if he put in for mileage, so it saves.
Except it's going down to 53.5%. 53.5%.
Okay. All right, so where are we at? What do you think?
I like your idea.
As someone who has done the.
Minutes.
Minutes a number of times, I've never put in for them and quite frankly, I never intend to, because I'm already here to attend the meeting and I'm already getting a stipend that's a board member. So I personally.
A lot.
If it could go, it could be raised to $75, what I'm saying is if I do the minutes, I'm not going to put in for that $75 anymore.
I understand that.
Though I'm not going to obligate other people to be, to do that.
It's a lot of work.
It's a lot of work we have.
A lot of work, it's a great job.
Chris, can you do your 1,500 divided by 60?
I do, I do a much lousier job than Peter though.
Oh, no.
Was the $500.
Be 45, okay, so now do 25 times 75.
No, we're going to put it as a budget.
18, so that would move that up to eight, that would change 1,500 to 1,875.
I think we should do that.
Okay. It's on select board clerk, the gray area.
So we've agreed upon that.
Eighty with 75.
So budgeted, it's budgeted at 25 meetings at $75 per meeting.
All right, so that's 1,875.
Thank you, Chris.
No problem.
So we've, we've agreed on Louise's increase?
I, I think we should do that and that would, so that increases that by.
I would just make it around, so we, I would make it, I would just add to 200 because some, she's a grandma now, she's traveling more, she likes to walk. So I think you could just put it at around 8,200 or 80, 80, just add 200, make it 8,300.
8,300.
And the assistant treasurer?
Yeah.
Okay.
8,300, 8,000.
Then we probably do an official meeting for when her, you know, we can talk about when the 50 cent increase starts and when it's effective, if you want to make it a calendar year deal since we're in the new year, or if you want to wait until July, or what you want to do, I don't, I don't care, but that's a different.
Well, the budget is, the budget starts July 1st.
I know.
So we just put the number for this.
We can't really do the issues budget.
No, you've got, you've got to start, you'd have to, you'd have to warn it and have special.
Oh, okay, all of that. So we're doing July 1st?
Yeah.
July 1st, then let's just do the July 1st budget.
All these are, so we set.
But Samara can tell me, right? I can tell her.
You settle up here?
So.
So we have no control over the.
So should we just continue to work out?
Yeah, sure, sure.
Through this election officials.
Okay, election officials, we budget 200 and we, okay, you need to go to reimbursements?
No, wait a second, what did you want to?
We're still on.
I agree.
You want to work off of your worksheet, guys, don't work off of that, we have this number sitting. Here, take a blank one. Take a blank one.
I have a page number.
While we have.
I have one might be.
Yeah, okay, good.
All right, so you're talking about town health officer.
Third page.
Election officials.
Sticking on election officials.
We budget $200 in expense and it looks like we're over.
All right, the reason for that is that.
Is we get reimbursed, sorry.
Yeah, because as the, as elections come around, we need to have people count, we need to have people to be there to witness and so forth, and I literally had to pay some people because that was the only way I could get them to come there.
Yeah.
And I also think that some people that, when they spend all day there, they should be compensated for it, you know?
No, that's fine, I guess the question is we were $366 over.
Over budget. So do we need to budget?
So it's 200 enough.
I don't think you need to budget too much more and I'll tell you why. Because what you're not.
We're going from the bottom up.
We're going, we're working off the ladder.
It was legal service.
You're.
So smoothly decided to make sure.
You're, keep going.
Election officials.
I think, where are we?
You're not paying.
You don't get that page.
Hey, I'm.
We're in, we're applying.
So we start, the animal control is 500. Start right above the X.
Yep, yep.
Start above the X.
Animal control, that's 500.
Yep.
1,875 for select, for select board clerk, 8,300 for the assistant treasurer, um, election officials, okay, so I'm going to, I mean, I, you could add $100 to be saved, but what you're not seeing in that expense line is there's a reimbursement line, so some of those election official expenses are reimbursed, so we bill, bill it back to the school district.
Right, to leave.
So in that, I can't tell you because I don't have the detail printed out, but I know we, we bill back the hourly rate per person to Leland and Gray and Newbrook for, mostly Leland.
Any vote that records an Australian ballot.
Yeah. So I guess it's just Leland and Gray.
So maybe we keep it at 200 then?
Yeah.
Okay. If we, if we, if we think we're getting that back in.
Yeah, if we're over budget by 200, unless Guy thinks we need to add money.
No, that's fine, because we're going to be reimbursed for some of those, those figures. Okay, yep, so 200 is good. This is reappraisal, that's.
Let's just reappraisal, we don't budget for them unless we know we're doing a reappraisal.
No, but they get, how much money do they get for, the state gives them money for?
The state gives them education, I have to, I have, they get about $386 back in a year on education, which goes against their education. The reappraisal, we never budget for that and I don't know what, why it's a separate line item and why it's in the town operating budget, because I don't understand why it would come out of.
Well, I thought we had a fund, a reappraisal fund.
We do have a reappraisal fund, but I.
Where does that money come from?
That comes from the state, we get a little over $2,000 every year to fund it, up to $28,000.
Okay, so the state fends that, okay.
So I, I guess, I kind of questioned whether that line should be removed from the budget because.
Do you have a sense of the last time we ever actually, if ever, have we ever budgeted money for it?
Not during, no, not.
No, because the state pays us.
And the state pays enough, puts aside enough that it actually.
Well, let's just say it's $2,000.
Costs enough for reappraisal.
It's $2,000, the last appraisal cost us $18,000, I believe, so, you know, 10 years, it's been 10 years since we had a reappraisal, so $2,000 a year, that's $20,000, so we're close enough that we can afford it and if we have to.
And then their salaries get charged to the reappraisal fund if it's related to reappraisal. So I've never personally understood why it's in the town operating budget, which I could call someone and.
All right, so the listeners, when we have.
So we don't budget on that.
Budget strike now, move on, all right. Assistant town clerk, trust your reason, that's separate, huh?
That, I break that out for informational purposes because assistant town clerk is on regular duties, was under budget, but the records restoration takes additional work, so I wonder if we shouldn't budget money on that one. We have a reserve.
Well, yeah, we have what?
We actually have, I don't know with all the.
On every, on every page that I record, we charge $10. $2 of that goes toward the reappraisal fund, I'm sorry, toward the records restoration. So.
So you show it as an expense.
Right.
But there's already been money that's been set aside in the reserve and I can't remember offhand how much is.
And what we've been doing is that Gwen, who's been working two hours, I, I take two hours every week to get, to, to pay Gwen, add the restoration fund because she's doing something that cost us probably tenfold. So it should come out of that, that particular records restoration fund.
Yeah, it's kind of the same deal like, like the highway fund, where it shows a big deficit, it's because it's using the. So we just break that piece out for the financial statements for information purposes.
Should we leave it at 990 or make it a thousand or?
No, you don't budget for it.
So don't budget at all, so X this out.
X it out.
Okay.
That stays at zero, it's not budgeted. Maybe that's why the listers reappraisal is in there, I don't know. Okay, then you have the records, then you have the regular.
Assistant clerk.
Assistant clerk budget.
That's predicated on eight hours a week and so forth, so I'm good with that, I'm good with, you know.
6240.
That and I'm also, all right, next one, I'm sorry, health officer.
Auditors. Health officer is blank.
Health officer, we, we don't budget for. Auditors, they're, they've been under budget forever, so I don't know what you want to do about that.
Do some of the money into the audit.
So we dropped it down, last year you dropped it down from 1,500 to 1,100.
Yeah, I don't think, I think we should.
I think you should keep it 1,100, yeah.
I think they'll be morally offended.
Just keep it a little, 1,100.
And we don't, oh, one year we, actually, we differentiated between the chair of the committee and the, doesn't, Marsha gets paid at $15 an hour.
Right.
So I wonder if we shouldn't do that for the auditors too, because the chair, there's no differentiation, they're all paid at 1,250 an hour. So you guys can decide, but it shouldn't impact their budget.
So 1,250 an hour versus the chair, which, which you might suggest might be a $15.
I might suggest you should be consistent with the listers, put her at 15, just for consistency's sake.
Was, does Frank put any lifting for the, for the?
Doc, would we agree on, on animal control?
Frank is kind of like the springer, he comes in and does a lot of stuff all at once, but Heidi kind of, she's, she's been really good with meeting with you guys and she organizes it, she comes in, she leaves, she's been leaving me notes and I know she's actually working, so.
Oh, yeah, I've seen it, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm trying to get her all the reports, I'm suspecting they'll be in this Sunday, because it's been holidays, so, they took, they come in and work on Sundays, so we see the car here on Sunday mornings, that's who's.
Okay, so moving up to listers.
So leave it at that number and listers the same?
Yeah, 4,400 is, I think is fine.
Is it suitable, because they didn't spend that last year.
Because I told, I explained to Marsha, if she had any, any qualms or anything about it, please come to the meeting, she didn't come to the meeting, so $4,400 is the figure.
Okay, delinquent tax collector?
I'd still like to leave that there because I never know what I'm going to come across. This year I was lucky, things fell in order, but that one, that one bankruptcy is making me crazy, but there's not much I can do about it.
There are quite a few on our late, we have quite a few late taxpayers with that and so eventually by the end of the year, Guy can kind of dive in and nudge them and say, look, you don't want to pay the 8% penalty, pay now, so that really falls under delinquent tax collection. I mean, if they are truly delinquent, but Guy really.
No, and, and you know.
Guy doesn't have.
I try to get them going, because I don't want to see anybody pay that 8%, but by the same token, if you're going to be delinquent, then I'm sorry, the 8%, it didn't work, so you'll have to pay.
Okay.
And that happens the day after May 15th. If you have any delinquency, any, I mean, any payment due, at the May 15th, it's not appropriate, May 16th you get an 8% penalty, that's the statute, I don't, I don't.
All right, so then we go to the treasurer tax collector.
I think mine's fine.
5925?
Yeah, or you can take off the $25 if you want, just make it a flat 591.
5,900 it is.
Yeah.
Okay, town clerk?
Reduction.
I think maybe we should, we look at the fiscal year 2017, actual was 2220, I don't know, if you wanted to increase this up to 22,000?
Um, you know, the funny thing about the budget is, it's, you try to work within the realms of your budget, but things happen and before you know it, you're putting in more and more hours.
And when you look at it though, his hours balance out because he's $1,700 under budget on delinquent tax collector.
Exactly, so what I do is I look at my, my three figures and I try to stay within the realms of that budget.
Idea that nobody knows about too.
We know that, yeah.
No, 2156 is predicated on so many hours a week and so forth and the same thing, everything is by hours, that's how we came to these figures, maybe two years ago. So let's just keep it that way.
All right, so I want to locate an extra hour a week or something like.
No, but I would take that paid vacation to.
No, you're not taking paid vacation.
All right, 2156.
No, I'm not going to.
And then, and select board stays the same at 65.
Whatever you call it.
Select board stays the same, 65, 6550. All right, so we, so I guess what we got accomplished was some changes in ACO, $15 for clerk, ACO stipend, so we're going to take a look, I'm going to plug numbers and then we're.
No, no, we got, oh, no, we got.
We got all the numbers.
The supervisory thing or.
Look at the board changing the job title from road foreman to road supervisor.
So where's this?
There's not on here.
It's not on here, but.
This is one of the things that.
But for budgeting purposes, do you want to change the title? For budgeting purposes, do you want to change the dollar amount that's on that line item?
Right, because we, we did, we probably kept that on hours, you know.
And Mark is, Mark has pretty much never gone over budget.
Right.
Make a year of my reading, everything was over budget, but that was an unusual situation.
Oh, we tried to work within the bounds.
And.
Number six for highway.
Right, and you'd have to go in the highway.
Where are?
And it would basically, I would say it would impact the summer salaries and mileage.
Uh-huh, uh-huh, okay. 15,500. Summer salaries, okay, we got 15,000. Do you, Mark, do you remember what we predicated with 21?
$21 an hour times whatever.
Divided by 15.
How many hours?
15,500, can you do that there? Oh, you got the hours again.
He's got 577.4 here, that's 11.5 per week.
Oh, thank you, darling. I love my new home. Thank you.
So basically.
I do that.
Basically his hourly rate is 21, is that what it is?
It's currently 21, yep.
And they suggested 24?
I said, I said 25 for the sunny light daycare.
But this doesn't impact the budget.
Doesn't impact the budget and for the road supervisor, I was looking at $2.
Increase.
Increase.
Mark, do you know what, like in Townsend and Newfay and so forth, do you, are you close to where they are at all in?
Uh, no, I, I don't really keep up, I don't.
Okay, I was just curious, like about what current, see, it's been.
It's all different because I'm part-time, you know, they're full-time with that.
Plus we use your equipment, you make your equipment and so forth, okay.
So it's, it's hard to compare.
Well, you're on the right track, keep going.
I mean, if you'd like to talk about it, I don't have to be here.
No.
No, no.
Actually, we're talking about the job, not the person.
Right.
It's all about the job.
I mean, I always try to stay within the town's budget, I know we're a small town with small security. You know, I would be full time, but I don't.
15, 30.
So we do.
Right.
So I guess I'm, I'm, I was calculating other stuff, so I'm not completely sure I followed everything you were suggesting. Were you suggesting?
There's titles change?
A title change and compensation, a corresponding compensation increase for the, what we currently call road foreman.
Correct.
So from $21 an hour to $23 an hour.
23, 24,000 short, but we're going to be able to afford.
And that position is not, in the state is usually how much an hour?
Sometimes, if you looked at that compensation, Ron, in some compensations, they were in the 30s.
Forget, we're firing Mark, is he in?
And also, some town courts are 65,000. You forget that. It's true, no, it's really, that is all also.
The $2 increase based on the 77 hours would be about an increase, a budget increase of about 1,155, let's call it.
1,155. A $3 would be 1733.
So $2 would be, how much have been increased?
1155, we'll call it.
And at $3, you want me to do two cases?
1733.
1733. Okay.
But so, okay, yeah.
I don't think we're breaking the budget and I hope we are.
I don't think that.
No, so you're saying from 15,5 to 17, 17,3?
Can, can we afford $3 an hour extra for the road supervisor position based upon the historical number of hours that position took? Can we afford the additional 1733 in this year's budget, in the next budget? That's what I'm asking.
That's the right answer.
And keeping in mind, we've, we basically have just added from the other increases we did, we've added with the payroll taxes, 1141, we'll call it, 1,141. I guess the only additional thing that's floating out there though is, and I think it's a good idea, your suggestion of possibly budgeting and separating out a sunny lane daycare.
Maintenance person?
Maintenance person, although that all comes out of.
It comes out of their incomes.
So it doesn't really have any impact.
And we already charged for the lane for whatever time. I mean, what you need to do maybe next meeting is put on your agenda items, something formalizing the salary rate changes. Positions, rate titles and changes. Because this, I mean, we've got apples and oranges here, we've got the budget, we need the budget numbers, but then we're talking some compensation changes. So from.
So are you changing some salaries or?
I'll just put on the next agenda, road supervisor rate of 24 dollars an hour.
24 dollars an hour, which would add 1733 to, 15,5 plus 17, can we just call it 1730?
Yeah.
Sure, sure.
Okay.
And.
I'll send Louise's.
And then Louise's is 200.
Yeah, it's $200.
Yeah, we, you know, yeah, but we'll.
That's a lot of right, not coming out of your option.
21.
So the one we really need to put into the voting would be the title change.
The only thing you have to put into the voting, you don't have to do that.
No.
It's awkward, you don't.
Next week, next to the next.
Yeah, that's, that's an employment, you know.
But for the next board meeting, I want to.
I think what it meant was voting with us, not.
I'm just saying, if one of your board meeting agendas, you should make, you should make a separate meeting to like say, okay, we've gone through all the salaries, you did our budget, now we're going through and we're officiating all the salary rates.
Okay, let's not, I'm saying.
Let's not.
No praise, no raise.
Okay.
Well, will I do the draft budget, make sure I have, you guys are comfortable with how I put it together? Okay, so I'm going to make.
Sounds like Janoski.
Anything else?
So we're going to change supervisors to, we're going to work on the next.
I want the board man for the agenda to vote, change the road foreman, the road supervisor, and the salary change that goes along with that.
Salary line?
For, for the supervisor, and then I'll make mention of the sunny lane rate. I would like to use.
You don't have to mention anything about Louise's, right?
No.
We did.
We just put the budget in. Yeah, you do, you do have to, you have to say, you know, we've approved a 50 cent an hour increase.
So and so and so.
For the.
No, not for that position.
For that position. For that position.
That's the assistant treasurer position.
Okay, so I.
And then I guess my, my thoughts too, you know, well, I have no other thoughts.
But don't we have three assistant treasurers, is that for?
I do, but Marie is happy with her $14 an hour and she comes in infrequently and she is.
Is she considered a bookkeeper?
She's an assistant treasurer, she had to be sworn in as an assistant treasurer, but neither Marie nor Louise have any cash handling authority, which is good because they do the books. And then I'm a check signer and Guy's a check signer. And technically it would be better if I wasn't a check signer because I have access to the books, but.
No, we're, I think, you know, our.
We're a small.
We would have no problem, you know, with orders or anything, I think the way we're doing things is pretty.
The internal controls aren't perfect, but they're pretty darn good.
Yep.
Okay, so how are we at then, ladies and gentlemen?
So here I am, we're, this $25 an hour salary for sunny lane daycare, we can make that immediate, we don't have to make that in the next year's budget, correct?
You can do any of these whenever, but you have to make it in mind. Yeah, I mean.
I don't why.
That one can go into effect pretty immediately.
Yes, so.
You should decide that at the next meeting. Like if some of these raises are effective July 1st, we should, that should be noted. If some of them are effective, we, in the next pay period.
All right, we're good, thank, I got help.